Councilmember Conley.
President.
Councilmember Lozey.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Okay, first item of proclamation for the Fortuna Community Emergency Response Week 2023, and I'm going to ask Enoch to come up and say a couple words.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. It's a great honor to be here on behalf of the Volunteer Fire Department and the Community Emergency Response Team here in Fortuna. I want to introduce some members, and the reason that I want to introduce them is they were part of the response after the December 20th earthquake, and they were called on to help citizens here in Fortuna, and then later.
Wait a second, microphone's not on? The TV guy just said it's not.
I can speak louder than my.
If it doesn't go to the mic, they can't hear it on TV.
And I know we tested it, and it worked before the meeting, so something happened between now and then.
Would you like me to start where I left off?
You could start from the beginning.
Man, I'm mayor and city council members. It's a great honor for me to be here tonight. My name's Enoch Ibarra, and I'm here representing the Fortuna Volunteer Fire Department and its Emergency Response Team. There are actually five people here who are part of the recognition and proclamation being made tonight, and I want to introduce them. First of all, it's Emily Mazzone Clemente, who is the leader of the TEAN CERT, Team Community Emergency Response Team, the only one in Humboldt County. And there's Giovanna and Genova Clemente, or Mazone Clemente, and Grace Wilson. And I know that there's somebody else that doesn't want to be recognized, but I'm going to recognize him anyway because he was there during the earthquake assisting with everybody else during the hard work, and that's Councilmember Mike Johnson. And, I mean, it takes a lot of hard work and dedication, besides all the training that you have to go through to do this. But it's a privilege to work with these folks, and Mayor, I'll go ahead and give up the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Fortuna Community Emergency Response Team Week, September 11th through September 15th, 2023. Whereas Fortuna Communities, Fortuna's Community Emergency Response Team is dedicated to, first of all, educating community members, businesses, schools, and house of worship in the basic skills needed for them to be able to respond to the needs of their families, their neighbors, and themselves in the first days following a disaster. Whereas the team's secondary objective is to be able to provide an immediate response to our community in the first hours or days after a disaster when needed. Whereas they exist to serve as a force multiplier for our first responders during a large-scale community event, community emergency, or disaster. Whereas the Fortuna CERT team serves under the guidance of and with the support of the Fortuna Fire District, working closely with other members of teams from throughout Humboldt County CERT Council. Whereas Fortuna CERT members quickly mobilized during early morning hours of December 20th, 2022, to assist our community following a 6.4 magnitude earthquake, after which they continued to serve the citizens of Fortuna at the request of that community through December 26th until they were placed on standby by their team leader membership. Now, leadership, I meant. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, recognize and honor Fortuna's CERT team members and in, and in particular, the TEAN CERT member, members who have already demonstrated that they are ready to serve our community in a time of need, and do hereby proclaim this week, September 11th through, oh, the week of September 11th, 2023, Fortuna Community Emergency Response Team Week. And thank you very much. Emily is going to.
Thank you for this great honor. It's a privilege to serve in our community, where we are very happy to live. This team would not be possible if it weren't for the excellent leadership of Enoch Ibarra. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is Recology and Cancer Crushers.
And so, real briefly, I'd like to just introduce Linda Wise and Frank Nelson, and I also saw Chris Mobley here, and they wanted to make an announcement about a exciting new opportunity related to solid waste and garbage here in our community.
Thank you for, for the time this evening, to the folks on the council and Ms. Mayor. Recology, Eel River, and Recology Humboldt County were approached pretty recently by the Cancer Crushers Organization with an opportunity to find a partnership and to create value where there would take very little actual input. And so, we got creative and came up with a program to make available some cans for the community and, and make a lifeline to the Cancer Crushers Organization. You know, a little bit of work went into it to, to make sure that we were, these were going to be compliant, you know, with the state of California and things like that. But a lot of conversations about the why went into it and the who, I think that it just came back to the people that, that are impacted. And I wanted to bring up our partners. Come on up and talk a little bit more about the program and how people can get involved, and we want to pass out these, I'll pass out the flags.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. A big thank you to Recology for the Pink Can Crushing Cancer One Can at a Time Campaign. It's really going to make a big impact on those in our community battling cancer. I'm Karen Clower, the California Cancer Crusher Board Chair. I want to give you a little bit of information about the Cancer Crusher and then talk about, more about the program. The California Cancer Crusher is a local nonprofit whose mission is to make a difference in the lives of children and families affected by cancer in our community. We do this by raising funds that support the California Cancer Crusher Local Assistance Program, the California Cancer Crusher Scholarship Program for local high school seniors whose lives have been affected by cancer, the Breast GYN Health Project in Arcata, St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and the American Cancer Society. We support cancer patients and survivors also through our Art From the Heart Project, where cancer survivors and caregivers document their journey of their cancer survivorship through art on three-by-three canvases that are displayed at local events. We also have an Art From the Heart 2.0 Project, where cancer survivors tell their stories. This project is displayed annually at our Wings for a Cure Dinner and Auction. And new is our Medical Binder Program, where cancer patients can gather all of their medical information, scans, appointments, notes, and financial documentation in one central location and take with them to their appointments. We host two fundraising events a year. Our biggest one is our Wings for a Cure Dinner and Auction. It's typically held in March, and this year it'll be our 10th annual event. We also host an annual California Cancer Crusher Golf Tournament, and we are actively involved in our community by volunteering and participating in local events. I do have to say, the success of the California Cancer Crusher would not be possible without our California Cancer Crusher team of volunteers and the generosity of our community. Now to the Pink Can Campaign. The Pink Can Crushing Cancer One Can at a Time Campaign will have a real impact on those facing cancer in our community. This campaign will lessen the financial burden that cancer places on families. We've discovered that the majority of residents who are diagnosed with cancer leave the area for treatment. Those who do not leave the area or choose to receive their treatments here still face financial burdens, such as medical bills, time away from work, and other costs associated to treatment and after-treatment care. Each $100 donation from this campaign will go directly to the California Cancer Crusher and will be, and will provide financial assistance to local families battling cancer and our California Cancer Crusher Scholarship Program. In 2022, we were able to provide 20 families with financial assistance. So far this year, we've provided 43 families with financial assistance. So, the need is out there, and we are very appreciative of this program and this opportunity. With this campaign, City of Fortuna residents will have the unique opportunity to show their support to those battling cancer in our community. For more information about the Pink Can Campaign, people can reach out to the California Cancer Crusher at ca.cancercrusherpinkcan@gmail.com, or visit our website at thecancercrusher.org. And with that, I believe we have a couple of our Humboldt County Board of Supervisors who would like to say a few words as well. Thank you.
Esteemed Mayor, honorable council members, thanks for having us. I got started with the Cancer Crusher Team, I'm like an associate member, I guess a bench sitter, 12 years ago, and when we had our first event out at the Sheriff's Hall out in freshwater. Hundred people showed up, I think we made $7,000 or $8,000. Our last event this last March was at Redwood Acres, we had over 450 people there and made a lot more. So, with that money, as was mentioned, and I think this is really, if anybody said, Dr. Mahoney and Dr. Lou, two of our, our cancer doctors for Providence, are geniuses, were just, were just recognized as leaders in their field nationwide, and that should, little Humboldt County with 136,000 people, we have a great oncology department. So, it's, they've helped, and they've been a great supporter. As was mentioned earlier, we've given 16,000 in scholarships, a couple seniors here. We give to St. Jude's American Cancer Society. We've donated over 80,000 to local cancer-related nonprofit organizations, Breast Gen Health Project and the Evergreen Lodge. And the given directly to 100, 100,000 to families, and you mentioned 20, usually they get between 500 to 1,000, for traveling funds and things like that, or any way we can have, or even more. So, the whole idea is the community supports us. I think this is a great idea of what we're doing. I think it's great we're kicking it off in Fortuna, and then the rest of the county as we go, because a lot of people, as was mentioned, this isn't just for cancer survivors or somebody that has cancer. This, it doesn't matter, we've all been affected by it. There's nobody, I mean, I think the statistic is one in three will have cancer at one time or another. So, I, the idea of doing this and supporting this, and it's a good way to give money to the Cancer Crushers, because there's no administration money, it's all a purely volunteer organization, and we have over 200 businesses donate to the Wings for a Cure, and it has been, it's been a wonderful jersey the last, you know, 12, 13 years with these, with this team, and it means a lot. So, thank you guys for having us, thanks for kicking this off, so. This team, Michelle Bushnell.
So, I'd like to thank the Cancer Crushers and Recology and the City of Fortuna for being the first ones with the pink cans. I want to say something a little different. Two years ago, my son, my best friend's son was diagnosed with cancer, and when you, when you're first diagnosed with cancer, you, you don't know what to do, and you, it's a lot of expenses, if you have to travel out of town. I was able, Karen, said, "Well, have your son, your friend's son apply." And he was granted some money, and it helped him to be able to go to the city and to get a jump on, you know, his cancer treatment. And so, I just, and Rex is right, you know, almost everybody is affected by cancer at some time or other in their life, and just the importance of, the financial burden is huge for cancer patients and families, and I just am so appreciative of what this will mean for families and people and what Cancer Crushers bring to Humboldt County. So, thank you to the City of Fortuna for having this and doing this, and to Recology. Thank you so much.
Just on a last note, these are 20-gallon and 30-gallon garbage cans, and so, we have, I think, around 300 of them available now. The interesting thing is that they cost the exact same as a regular Recology garbage can, so we could, you know, we could be doing this hopefully across the county at some point. Again, they're 20- and 30-gallon cans, they are for the waste, they're the garbage cans, and they're going to be available pretty soon through the Cancer Crushers' website. I'm hoping that, we're all hoping that all three of 100 or so that we have are going to be gone quickly, and at that point, we'll be reordering. So, watch the website, and thank you very much to everyone in Fortuna, because I know they're going to be really interested. I can't wait to have a pink can out in front of my house, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Frank, I had a question. Nobody really explained how it's going to work. You make a donation and you get the can, or you make a donation monthly or annually?
So, it'll be an annual donation of $100 to the Cancer Crushers, and it'll get paid directly to the Cancer Crushers. And then, Recology will actually bring out a can, a 20- or 30-gallon can, and drop it off at your house. And so, every year, you can renew the donation and keep the can, or if, you know, things have changed and you can't keep up the donation, then we will come and pick the can back up, and you'll revert to your old can. So, pretty good system. Hopefully, you know, we deliver them once and people keep them forever. And if anything happens to the can, we obviously replace it.
I had to say, Frank, if you could help us get us some information, we can help get the word out and put something up here in City Hall, too.
Absolutely. We pushed through some of the social media stuff, it's just getting wrapped up here to connect us with the websites and connect Recology to Cancer Crusher and, you know, Cancer Crusher to us, and some links so that way people can go on. And I think we brought in a couple of forms today. One of them is an interest form that is going to be made available for everybody, and there's also a flyer which should make its way around to all of you. Do you guys have any more questions about the program, or any early adopters?
I would, as soon as they're available.
As soon as they're, all right, all right.
It's going to be nice to see every street in Fortuna lined with pink cans.
I would love to see that. And I'm sorry, I forgot to wear my pink shirt today. I apologize.
Yeah, and thank you, Recology, for doing this, because this will be a great fundraiser for.
Yeah. We've had, we've got 140 employee owners here in the community, and of that, you know, 40 of them work here in Fortuna, and, you know, just in the last three years, we've had some pretty bad cancer cases with people that live here that work with us. And so, you know, it's a way to do the right thing, and it's a creative way where you don't have to get any more resources. You don't have to buy anything, you don't have to really, you know, really look for grant funding, it's just something that already existed that you can make something almost out of nothing, so it's a wonderful thing to do. And we thank you for your time today.
Can I ask one more question?
One more question, yes.
Is this like a program that somebody could, like, buy the can for somebody else, be a great Christmas present?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, and making that donation, you know, for somebody else to?
Or in memory of someone else, too, that may have passed from cancer. I think it's, and there's also the possibility that, you know, you don't have to do just 100, you can do a little bit more. And so, you know, there's, yeah, it's going to be a really great gift. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
It's a possibility, yes.
And it would be nice to have something that we all could share on Facebook to really get the word out on this?
Absolutely. We need a pink can drive, I like that.
Yeah.
We're going to strap them to the trucks during the truck.
And you only have 150?
No, we've got about 300 of them in the 20-gallon and the 30-gallon size that are available right now.
Okay.
So, watch the Cancer Crushers' website, and there should be a link up pretty quick here to go ahead and order your can.
How long does it take to get more?
Just depends on budgeting, but I think ours starts in October, so maybe a month or two?
Okay, that's perfect.
Unless I have to drive down and pick more up down at the plant.
You might have to.
If it goes that good, we will.
It's going to go that good. Starting in Fortuna is a great start, you know.
This is the right, this is the right place to do it.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you again.
I'll give you a few minutes for anybody who wants to leave before we start the business part. You weren't?
Weren't.
Are you going to get a pink can?
I'm going, as soon as I find out. I'm going for it. I'm going to find out if they'll send one to Eureka.
No, I think that was 30-gallon, 20's small.
You know, if you wait a couple of weeks for the second order, you may get a bigger. I've had the same trash can almost since I moved into the house, and it's a 32-gallon. But I'm going to get on their waiting list, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're CERT members.
Are you?
Yeah, I went through the training. No.
Because there are other CERT teams in here. Oh, yeah. I went to a training, even Gene Bass is a CERT member, yeah.
I'm going to continue. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on consent, city council minutes and report of dispersments. Anybody want to pull any of them? No? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as printed.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to city business. And our first one is to continued public hearing, consider adopting the multi-family design standards, Resolution 2023-26. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Can you hear me okay? So, there, this is a continued item, so we're not going to have a formal staff report. I just wanted to let you know that our consultants with Plan West and Ben Noble Consulting are on the phone to answer questions. But just real briefly, the multi-family design standards were considered first at a public hearing on June 27 by the Planning Commission. The Fortuna Council held the first public hearing on August 21, 2023, to consider the draft standards. And then, more recently, at the last meeting, the council had a chance to approve those, and they asked us to go back. There was a number of comments that came in from the public, from Sue Long, and so, the council asked us to collect those comments, to take a look at those, and also to notify the stakeholders who were involved in the development of the multi-family design standards early on. And so, we did those things, and also, I will just say that there was a few areas where there were comments, particularly about some of the fences between multi-family housing projects in the street, about the windows and potential for rot if you have windows that are inset three inches. And so, we drove around and looked at some of those things, and in the council packet, there's a markup version of the multi-family design standards that we took into consideration, the public comments, and then we modified those, and those are included in the attached document. And then, I will say that there's a couple of recommended changes, and I'd be happy to just kind of go through those verbally. If you want to see those, I'd be happy to pull up a copy of those. I don't think I joined the Zoom meeting with all the announcements, but I can kind of run through those real quickly, the two that I would suggest changing. And then, one of those on page 10 of the design standards recommending adding another baseline standard that says trim or framing for windows must be a color that visually contrasts from the building wall, and that's on page 10. The next suggestion change, which is different from what's in the council packet, would be on bullet item two, under the same section on page 13, which would be for all street-facing windows with windows inset less than three inches from the exterior wall or frame surface, a grid or frame pattern shall be added to at least one half of the window to simulate the smaller panes of glass and add characters to the wall surface. So, that, you know, one of the things, there were two credit standards that were there. The other one was for street-facing windows and doors, which would have to be built up with a wide trim of two-inch thickness. And the other one was that there would be an inset minimum of three inches from the exterior wall. And so, one of the comments that caused us to go and really look closely and go around town and really look at the windows is, you know, what can we do besides those that might not require recessing them three inches, which there was concerns for rot in the past? There's a number of buildings around town that do have inset windows, like the Monday Club's an example, but now with the building materials and the common ways for trimming and framing windows, there's a concern that that could incorporate rot. So, we added another standard which would allow for some of the grid, a grid to be another baseline standard, and having looked at a number of windows, we think that one will break it up and is a good additional credit standard. It's in the packet? I'm not on one. Yes. And then, the last one, and let me just get to the page on the design standards. And this is on page six, and it's in the section under baseline standards for building entrances. There was a requirement under the baseline standards that, let's see, it's under number one, building entrances, bullet C, number three, that originally read, "Continuous solid fences between buildings and the street are prohibited. Private outdoor space provided may be defined by a low fence, at least 50% transparent." And having driven around and looked at a lot of the fences on multi-family projects, there's a lot of areas where there are short, solid walls that really look visually pleasing. Some examples of those are Yaro Village, there's some of those on the entrance, right next to the Renner Station on Newburgh, there's some, and those shorter fences really look nice, solid. So, the suggestion is to remove the at least 50% transparent portion of that, and then to leave the rest of the text of the design standards, as is in the marked-up copy that's in the council packet. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you have feedback on those suggestions, and we have Ben and Vanessa, if you want more details on any particular part of the design standards. Again, we had a full presentation at the last couple of council meetings, and so, this was intended to be a summary with some of the changes that we're suggesting.
Any questions from council?
I do. Mayor, you said on the very first thing you talked about on page 10, I'm not seeing the trim part.
Okay, let me just get into the.
The other things I found, but not this one.
Okay, and that's different from the one that's in there, so that's something that I added, but let me just show you on the screen where I'm talking about real quick, and I apologize, I did not log into the meeting, so I'm going to have to do that real quick, and then I can show you specifically.
It was on page 10, an item.
It might have been on page six in the old one, but I don't think it is here.
Okay. So, I apologize, I probably should have done this as I was running through those. I'll run through those changes that we discussed briefly. So, the first one, this is a marked-up version of the changes that were made incorporating public comments since the last meeting, and Mayor Trent, I'm not sure, do you want me to run through all the changes and briefly describe those, or just the ones that are different from the council packet?
Just the ones that are different from the council packet.
So, the first one is at the top of page six, and so, this is the line right here under bullet number three. "Continuous solid fences between buildings and the street are prohibited. Private outdoor space provided may be defined by a low fence." And I'd be happy to show you some pictures of those. I pulled them together, I could just show you an example of those real quick. One second, I may have to stop sharing and then share again. So, here's an example of what a low fence looks like. They're approximately four feet tall, and it's a solid fence. And here's, let's see. Here's an example of what one looks like close up, and this is on Newburgh. But the shorter fences do look pretty nice, and as you can see in this photo, some people actually, you know, I think one of the questions that came up in the public comments was, you know, how come not a tall fence? And in talking with our consultants, you know, really the issue was, do you want to wall multi-family neighborhoods off from the street? And there's plenty of examples around where you have a tall fence right against the road or the back of a sidewalk that you have to walk along for multi-family, but I think that the main reason for keeping these shorter fences is because it doesn't wall off those multi-family neighborhoods from the rest of the community. Can you actually see in this one where somebody decorated it and really, you know, gives them a chance to interact and not really have it walled off? And so, I thought these were some good examples of, you know, with that short wall fence, and getting rid of the standard of 50% transparent, I think, makes a lot of sense for this, and they actually look quite nice. So, back to the multi-family design standards with the markup. So, that was this one, and so, our recommendation there is removing the 50% transparent requirement. I'm going to scroll down and hopefully not make everybody sick, but then, this is the one, I'm sorry, on page 10. So, adding, this is one of the baseline standards. So, the recommendation is to have the trim framing be a color that visually contrasts from the building wall. That's the second change. And then, there's one more change here, and this is adding another one that, "For all street-facing windows with inset less than three inches from the exterior wall or frame surface, a grid or frame pattern shall be added to at least one half the window to simulate smaller panes of glass and add character to the wall surface." So, those are the three changes we made since the council packet came out, and working through some of the comments that we received.
Did that answer your questions? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor. I probably had the most comments. What's that echo?
It's not mine.
Echo. I probably had the most comments when we first looked at these, and I've looked at the changes that have been made, and I really, I appreciate those changes made by Merit as well as our, you know, the design consultants. I had some real concerns primarily with the process that we had, and the main concern is that our stakeholders that originally provided input were not able and had not seen the final product. And so, in the meantime, they have been provided copies of the final product, and so, we've had some input back from some of the stakeholders, and that completes the process then. And that was my biggest issue as far as, it just didn't look like the whole, the product was finalized, and now I think it is, and I'm satisfied with the process as we have it at this point, so. And I appreciate you're willing to make some changes on that, Merit, so that's all I have. have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just had comment and question on the building massing and the roof breaks and the five-by-five inset, and then there's another one, it's three-by-three, which will probably never be built, but it'll probably be four-by-four. But that can, from someone who's maintained stuff like that, that turns into a dirt trap and a litter trap with the winds and leaves and dirt, and just, it mentions in another location, projection instead of an inset, and I don't know what they think about that.
Yeah, I guess my only comment is that, you know, there's baseline standards, and those really come in in the credit standards for massing breaks, and there's a number of choices that folks can look at. So I think that there's a choice for a developer to be able to do that if they want to do the credit standard. You know, the other thing that I would say is, you know, there's, currently our process for multifamily developments is they all require a conditional use permit and design review. And so really this, you know, just to kind of reiterate, you know, what we discussed a little bit in the last council meeting, is that, you know, the city's not going to be allowed to have a subjective process like design review unless we have a process by which projects can be automatically approved or ministerially approved based on design standards. So, you know, we have these design standards. It was an effort put together by our planning and architectural team to try to identify what makes a building nice and appealing, and then how it can fit in in the various neighborhoods in the city. And again, there was two downtown, you know, the downtown area was broken out, areas where we have multifamily properties and primarily single-family zoned homes. And the whole effort was here to identify what features would make, you know, an aesthetically pleasing building to in those neighborhoods and then also for people to live in. And so, you know, there's still, if a developer wants to put together a project that doesn't comply with these standards in the streamlined permitting process, they can always go through that conditional use permit and design review. So, you know, I think that it's important to remember that that process that we've been going by for the past several years, it's been going really well. I can't think of a project that wasn't approved or maybe approved with some slight changes, but generally, we're doing a good job moving these projects out, and this would be, you know, this would be the streamlined method, which would make a project a little more difficult, but, or potentially have more features, but that same course of action to go to design review will still be available to applicants if they want to deviate from these standards.
Any other questions? Okay. Open public comment on this item. CNN will close public comment.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt resolution 2023-26 with the changes as stated and shown in the revised forms. And read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Resolution 2023-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting the multifamily design standards. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes.
Before we go to the second item of business, I skipped public comment earlier, so I'm going to go back to that. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a public or make an oral comment on anything that's not on the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Michelle Bishnell, and I stood before this council four years ago, running for second district supervisor. This evening, I stand before you again as I want to let the city and yourselves know that I will be seeking reelection on March 5th. I hope that I have served the city well. I have tried my hardest and have really come to love Fortuna and the people and community that makes up the City of Fortuna. I will be asking for support and hope that I can receive it, and if I have ways to improve, I look forward to having that discussion, and I really hope to continue to serve the City of Fortuna. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, Michelle, that I have enjoyed working with you these past four years, and you've done an excellent job for the City of Fortuna, so you definitely have my support. Any other, oops.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other public comments? Okay, CNN will close public comments and go back to business. The second item of business is to approve amendment to professional service agreements with the California Consulting for, I can't see this, Reconnecting Community Grants for Kenmar Interchange Improvements. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. First of all, I have to apologize for bringing this back to you, but let me give you a little bit of background. The city's working on, right now, the Kenmar interchange is, Kenmar and 12th Street interchange are bottleneck for the city. The two interchanges are projected to go to a level Service F at most of the legs with the city's planned growth and its general plan. You know, there's a lot of things that have led us to this point, and one of them being the closure of Drake Hill Road and then the growth of the city, but staff are really concerned that those interchanges could risk the long-term development of the city and jeopardize potential projects, both commercial projects and residential projects, by putting those intersections above an acceptable level of service. And so from a staff perspective, what we're trying to do is get ahead of that and get to a point where we can build those intersection projects before we run into the circumstance where they're limiting growth in the city. So staff has been working on a number of things to be able to try to get more attention to those. We presented to the Caltrans Executive Committee, we presented to just about every elected official that we can at local and state level, we've even reached out to Huffman's office at the federal level. And right now, the best opportunity for us that has been identified is to seek grants to be able to fund these intersections, just these interchanges. And so the primary one that we're focusing on right now is Kenmar, because it really could alleviate a lot of the traffic that comes through the city, both from the Camden Heights area and also the Fortuna Boulevard area. And we're also at a point where we have already adopted the environmental document, so it's closer to being shovel-ready, which is attractive to a lot of the grant agencies. With the cost of about $25 million, just to give you a sense, the STIP shares that are coming to the City of Fortuna, or excuse me, coming to the region over the next few years through HCOG is about $9 million. So there's insufficient regional funds to be able to fund that project, and the city does not have anywhere near enough money in the general fund to contribute even for a substantial match for a project like that. So we're heavily reliant on grant funds. With the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, there's more money that's going into infrastructure projects and going, being distributed through grant funds than there's been in past history that I remember. It's kind of similar to when the ARA Project Committee, wait, ARPA, am I confusing, ARPA and ARA, the ARA. In the past, there's been federal money that's come, and the city did receive money to do Fortuna Boulevard. Councilmember Johnson was involved with that as a Public Works Director, but there's more money in those programs. In the staff report, I had the number, but it's the billions, it's not millions. And so we're pursuing two grant applications, both through the Reconnecting Communities Grant. One of them is a federal application, which will be specific to a project, which we're including the Kenmar interchange, as well as the improvements around it, portions of the Great Redwood Trail just at the intersection, parts of the John Campbell Trail to provide non-motorized connectivity between both sides, and then the interchange itself, the on-ramp, off-ramp, and all the aspects, and it would be a double roundabout. The cost for that project's $25 million. The state grant that we're going for, they're selecting a community, and they're not selecting a project. And what they want to do is identify a community, they're setting, there's $150 million that they have statewide, they're going to be selecting an urban community, a rural community, and then a corridor community that is located along a transportation corridor. For that project, we've approached the Bear River Rancheria, there's, to see if they would be a project partner for us, because there's a real emphasis at the state level of serving communities that have been historically underserved. And so we're pleased to be able to work with the Bear River Band of the Rottweiler Rancheria on this. They've agreed to be a partner and to assist us during the design process of that project. And one of the interesting aspects that we're hoping to tie in is how, they own the 24 acres off of Redwood Way across from Redwood Memorial Hospital, and they're thinking about a variety of projects types that could happen there, as well as the proposed John Campbell Memorial Greenway or Strong Street Trail runs there. So we're trying to think about, how can we serve the broader community as a whole, and especially, how can we better serve historically underserved communities? And so there's some real options there to get the interchange done, incorporate projects that will provide a lot of non-motorized pedestrian connectivity throughout the city for the entire community. And so we're kind of on a fast-paced trajectory right now to finish both of those grant applications. The call for projects came at the end of July. I brought this to the last council meeting for approval. I requested $16,000. The consultant proposed a fee of $12,000 for projects over $250,000, which is a very reasonable rate for a grant application. It was my hope, because we're doing two grants for the same project, that we'd have a better economy of scale and that the effort would be combined, and maybe we'd have one grant writer, but the way the consultant does that is they have two teams of two grant writers, and they're very different requirements. For example, the federal grant requires a benefit cost analysis, which is very involved. And then the state grant requires a lot more in defining what the community benefits are, who the project partners are, and identifying the community. And so when I brought this to council last, it was my hope that we'd pay one and a half times because there's similar subject matter, but actually, they're very different. And so in talking with the consultant, they clarified after we went to the last council meeting that, no, you know, we can give you a break of $11,000 instead of 12, but that effort's going to be there to complete both grant applications. So currently, we have authorization up to $16,000, and I'd like to request another $6,000 to complete these grant applications. And so that's my request. We don't have a particular budget item for these, so the funding would come out of the general fund reserves.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, just, what's the date for application?
September 20th on the state grant and September 28th on the federal grant.
So right in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot of information, and it really gets extremely involved. I mean, trying to describe the housing situation in Humboldt County when you don't have a published document, and how much room Fortuna has versus other communities. It might sound easy, but when you have to actually put numbers to it, it's a little more challenging. Or, you know, when, you know, we have a large commercial property such as the Mill District or the Mill Site, you know, thinking about job creation, the type of jobs, how much those jobs pay, you just have to go to a very deep level to be persuasive to the grant evaluators. And so we haven't worked with this consulting, California Consulting. They're one of the few consulting firms that focus just on grants, but so far, it seems like they're trying to pull together the right information, and they have a good understanding of the depth of the projects, and it's a little unsettling to be going for such a big grant in such a short period of time, but, you know, we're making a pretty good run at it.
They would probably be the best way to do it, with their experience, the team they can throw at it.
We've tried to put some grants together. Well, we've been successful at a number of grants in-house, but trying to do the day-to-day work, trying to follow up on the infinite number of loose ends for a grant, and probably the hardest part for our staff, I mean, we're pretty practical from a staff perspective. We kind of write, here's what we want to do, here's the benefit and why, and that takes up about three-quarters of a page, maybe. So some of these, they just really want to see the volumes, and they want to see the community benefits enumerated, they want to see the effort, they want to understand the public process, they want to stand the benefit cost analysis. So there's a lot that goes into that that's common between grants, and so we haven't done a lot of grant writing. I think the most recent one we did, we paid for a grant to try to get an additional officer when the county didn't have funding for our school resource officer, so that's, and that was a $5,000 grant. So this one's significantly more upside, and the cost is about double, but I think there's, again, I don't think there's going to be a better opportunity for funding this interchange project or some of the associated projects for quite some time, especially given the way the federal budget and the state budgets are looking.
Thanks.
I feel a grant this big and this important, it's probably a good idea to get a professional grant writer to do it.
Yeah, again, and they're onboard, and it's going well, but, you know, I underestimated what the fee would be, and again, I think it's a reasonable fee in reviewing that with a consultant.
I have a question. So recently, the state released some awards that they have made through the reconnecting communities grants. Was that for 2022 or '23, or is that '23-'24 fiscal year?
I think it's for previous. I don't think any of the reconnecting communities grants for this year have come up, so I'm not sure which ones they are, but they were probably for a past cycle. But there's about, I don't know, three or four different reconnecting communities grants, and each one of them is part of a different program with a different funding source, and honestly, it's hard to keep them straight. There's the reconnecting communities neighborhood access program, there's reconnecting communities highways to boulevards, there's about three or four of them, and they're all different, and...
And you can go online, and you can actually look at the specific grants and what cities and entities have been awarded those grants. So I think you're right, it's the '22-'23 that has been announced or released.
Right. And for example, the state program we're prying for, they have not awarded any yet, so this will be the first award under the state program where they have $150 million. And they have a pretty short timeline for expenditure of those funds, and so we're hoping that, again, having our Kenmar interchange environmental document done, that puts us a lot closer.
Any other from council? Okay. I'll open public comment. Anybody from the public want to speak on this item? Okay, CNN will close public comment. You have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with California Consulting, Inc., to assist the city with two reconnecting communities grants in an amount, oh, that's the last one. That's it? Is that it?
Yeah.
Amount not to exceed $18,000.
Oh, no, $6,000.
$6,000.
An additional $6,000.
An additional $6,000 and a total amount of 22.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? CNN. We'll move on to the next item. Item C, renotice the first reading September 18th, or renotice for the first reading September 18th, 2023, ordinance 2023-762, amending Title 15, Building and Construction of Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Chapter 15.48, Construction and Demolition Debris Diversion, CD3. No attachment.
So yeah, just real briefly, the council sought to continue this. We were in the second reading for the construction and demolition debris ordinance, and we made some changes based on council feedback. In particular, the change was to the amount of the deposit to be paid, which could be forfeited if developers didn't meet the required standard. And so since the last meeting and consulting with our city attorney, he thought it would be appropriate and necessary to advertise and hold the first reading again rather than just continuing that. So we are going to re-advertise, we're going to hold a first reading, and then a second reading again with the changes that were brought by council. But I apologize, we just wanted to make sure that if anybody was here interested in this item, that they understood why we're not really addressing it. So we will be noticing and starting the first reading again at our next council meeting.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything for that item, then?
No action is being requested.
Any discussions from council? No? Okay, we go for the city manager's report?
So just a few items. First, I'd like to go through the upcoming meeting dates. So the next city council meeting will be on September 18th, will be active Monday. Thanks, everybody, for coming in on Tuesday tonight. Our next planning commission meeting will be on September 12th, the regular time, 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting coming up, it always seems like they're a long way out, but is September 19th at 5:30 PM. Our next Rottweiler Community Recreation Park District will be tomorrow at 2:30 PM in the council chambers, and then our next Business Improvement District meeting will be on the 26th at 8:30 AM. I just have a few items to report tonight. One of them, our city clerk and risk manager has been working with our risk pool to try to capture any funds related to the earthquake for the Monday Club. We've been putting together with Public Works and others estimates of how much it would take to put together the repairs for the Monday Club chimney, and so we are, we just received news that we'll be receiving a payment from the carrier for $54,000. So we'll be able to put that to use. I don't know if it's going to be enough to cover the entirety, but that's what our coverage provided to the city. And we've been waiting to be able to find an architect with enough time to be able to draft a plan. Staff's hope is to try to replace the chimney with something that could withstand seismic events in the future that looks as similar as possible to the original brick chimney that was there. So we're still working on it. Apologize to the public for the plastic on the front of the Monday Club, but we're doing our best to get that going. One of the other items I, I wanted to report is the 12th Street project, the 12th Street Stormwater Project. The hardscape is essentially complete, but the contractor is waiting for more fall or winter weather to put in the plants and to establish the plants. And then one other item, I just wanted to make sure the council's aware, the intersection of 12th and K, there was utility work that was done by PG, there was some water work that was done by city staff. So our Public Works Department is working to repave that entire intersection. So if you're driving through there and you notice it's a little bit bumpy, be patient, but that whole intersection will be repaved and a lot nicer, but it's, it's not finished yet. So I just wanted to let the council know that. And then one of the other things that we've been working on through the, the Fortuna Business Improvement District is banners. There's been a lot of discussion with the Business Improvement District about banners and I heard the first ones are rolling off that are kind of a fall, fall harvest theme and they have some organic-looking apple branches and apples that'll be coming out. There's also some for public safety, there's some informational ones about our parks, but we've got a really set of beautiful banners that we worked with, Carrot Lotus Mountain to put together and was really being led by our Fbid committee and our Fbid administrator. So I'm excited to see those come out. Hopefully they're not up, I didn't notice them up yet, but those will be coming out soon.
Thank you.
That's all I have to report.
Okay, any future agenda items? No? Okay, we'll move on to council, council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Had a redact meeting, got to kind of do the administrative stuff of the executive director's contract, so I was kind of in a back and forth for the last couple meetings. Approved one loan, other nothing, waiting for some more sports.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our September Lathco meeting has been canceled. We didn't have any MSRs or anything to review, so that's been canceled. This afternoon at 5:00, we, all of us attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony over at Roner Park for the brand-new basketball courts and pickleball courts. That's why I have my pickleball shirt on. In case you can't see it, oh, I can lean down here. Those are Fortunas. Pickleball right in the middle, so Fortuna pickleball. But I played this morning, had a great time. It's a great court out there. If anybody wants to learn how to play, you can get the nets from city parks, the balls, they've got paddles as well. And if you need somebody to help you to learn the game, there are plenty of people around. The parks can lead you or, or direct you to people that can show you how to play and, and teach you how to play. So we had a lot of people there from the community, as well as pickleball players and, and just folks that turned out from the community. So I want to thank everybody for that and thank Cameron for, and Merit for that project and, and for getting that through. It's a great project. That's it.
I'll just add to that, as we were all standing there, some kids walked up and said, "Are we allowed to play here?" And one of the nice young men went up and thanked city manager for the nice new basketball courts and told them how much they really enjoy them. So that was really nice to see the kids come up and do that. Okay, council member Johnson. No, wait a minute, Losi, Mobley. I got it right here.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I also was going to talk about the banners that are coming up, but Merit covered those pretty well. Another thing that the Business Improvement District Committee approved was to give grant funding for some new Christmas decorations that are snowflakes that light up, that are going to go on the banners at Christmas time. So those will be a really nice addition to our city. That's pretty much all I have for Fbid. RCA, they're, they're going through a lot of stuff with funding and being sure that they can be compliant with the 2030 state requirements. So those have been pretty lengthy meetings lately. That's all the update I have on that.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Well, it's, it's been slow since the last meeting in August. Everything seemed to happen prior to the council meeting. So we have a upcoming Apple Harvest Meeting this Thursday and I've also participated in the ribbon-cutting. And I want to give credit also to our Measure E Committee and the ones that got together and saw the, the value in this for our youth and the rest of our community and stepped up and made sure that we were able to complete that basketball and pickleball project. So that's a great thing. So, thank you, Measure E. And I'll be, probably be attending to RC, RPD meeting tomorrow too. I'm interested in the, how they're planning on, how they're working on getting the pool assessment out to the public and looking at how they're going to frame that. So, thank you.
And since I spent the last week in Idaho with my grandbabies, I don't have anything to report on city council, except it was a fun visit. And I think that's it for our meeting tonight, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, or meeting adjourned.